Welcome, everybody, to our first school committee candidate debate for Lowell. This is the at-large candidates and District One in Pawtucketville. This is cosponsored by the Lowell Sun LTC Telemedia and Lowell Votes and Kamai Post. So, thank you all so much for being here and to our questioners, we have George Prokop and Vladimir Soldanya. We have 15 minutes per question, five questions, every candidate will have two minutes and one minute to respond, if necessary, to another candidate's comments. So, thank you so much and we'll just get to it. So, I'll be having everyone introduce themselves and then corresponding questioners will be able to ask a question of each candidate. So, we'll start with Jackie Doherty. And, let's see, you have opening statements. Go ahead, I'll let you start.
Hi, my name is Jackie Doherty. I'm running for reelection to the Lowell School Committee. I am one of the at-large candidates and I respectfully ask for one of the two votes for Lowell School Committee. For those of you who don't know me, I've been involved in the Lowell Public Schools for, I'd say, about 20 years now. First as an involved parent and then as a leader on the Citywide Parent Council for five years and for 14 years as a member of your school committee. I'm also a college teacher. I taught at UMass Lowell and Daniel Webster College for about 11 years. Also spent more than 10 years as a volunteer in elementary classrooms, leading writing workshops during the day and in after-school programs. So, I think my background in education has given me some real insight into the challenges our staff face and the frustrations our families feel oftentimes. These times have been just so difficult because of the pandemic and what it's meant in terms of learning for our students. And it is just in the times like this that we need someone with my experience and passion for doing this work. I look at every situation from the lens of a parent. What would I want if that were my child, my son or daughter, in the schools? I pride myself on being an active and responsive listener to community concerns, whether you're emailing me, texting me, or calling me on the phone, whether you're a parent, a staff member, or a student in our schools.
Thank you, Jackie.
I will listen and do my best to respond.
Thank you.
I do my homework. Oh, sorry, I'm out of time.
Yep, thank you so much.
I get your job, Jackie. I appreciate you, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Mike Dillon, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mike Dillon. I'm running for reelection to school committee as an at-large candidate. I just finished, I'm in the midst of my first term right now. I'm a firefighter in Lowell. I live in the Highlands with my wife and my three daughters. The oldest attends Lowell Public Schools. And I think since I started campaigning two years ago, I've talked about being a different kind of candidate, and I think I've proven that in my first term. And I'm not going to speak like your typical politician. I'm going to say what I mean and I'm not going to bow down to outside pressures when I'm making decisions. And I actually, I think I thrive in pressure situations and making big decisions. And we need tough leaders around here that are going to be able to think on their own and make their own choices. A couple of things that I'm interested in doing, sorry, I don't know about my time here.
Couple more seconds.
Number one is physical fitness and mental health of our kids. That's going to be a huge push of mine moving into the next term if I get reelected. So, please give me one of your two votes on November 2nd for at-large school committee member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And we have, our candidates all tonight are seated alphabetically, but we incorrectly sat. Counselor Doherty and Mike Dillon just apologize for that and we're going to make our way through. Thank you so much. So, Connie Martin, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Connie Martin. I've been serving on the Lowell School Committee now. I'm in my 22nd year. It has been a very long and very powerful education for me, serving in this role, learning about the city from the perspective of students, parents, families, and the greater constituency here in the city, who are all connected, excuse me, and responsible for the quality of education here in the city of Lowell. Again, during that time, I've done my best again to do my homework, to look at this as serious work that needs to be done. And I think that one of the most critical aspects of our education system is the recognition that there is absolutely no great stride forward that this city can take if it's not based on the quality of our educational system. So, I would ask, come November 2nd, to please consider me for one of your two votes for the at-large seats for the Lowell School Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Ben O'Parr.
Hello, my name is Ben O'Parr. I am your candidate for District One of Lowell School Committee. District One is a combination of City Council Districts One and Eight, which Pawtucketville and the Highlands. I've run a couple of times unsuccessfully, though, for school committee at large, when it was at large. But with the new districting, it brings a new variety of challenges, which I am willing to confront. Now, I'm a resident of Pawtucketville. I have lived in Pawtucketville for over 20 years. I'm a father of three. All my three children went through Lowell Public Schools. Our entire public school system in Lowell also proceeded to public university in Amherst, both of them. My lovely wife Valerie is my guide and light in everything that essentially that I do. She's the anchor woman that I have in the house that keeps my house in check and in control while I run around. After my unsuccessful bids to Lowell School Committee, I was able to reengage and I have always reengaged and always engaged the city. I led the Citywide Parent Council for a couple of years before I ran again. So, I ask you for one of your two votes in Pawtucketville and the Highlands, because I will represent our neighborhood, bearing in mind that it's all about our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Peters.
Hi, I'm Jim Peters. I've lived in the city for 44 years. No, I've lived in the city for 50 years. I forgot. I was a UMass Lowell teacher and I was the Citywide Parent Council Chairman back in 1980, which is a long time ago. And it's been very ennobling getting to know all of these people in the city that had such a great desire to please everybody. And it's a wonderful thing about Lowell. And last year, I said, Lowell's a place to love, and I still stick by that. I believe that Lowell is a place to love. And people do incredible things here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And last, we have Stacy Thompson.
Good evening and thank you for the organizers of this event. Really excited to be able to be here today. And for those of you who are watching live and those of you who will watch later, I thank you for setting aside the time. You know, I think that a race is won by deciding who you know. And oftentimes, that's by name recognition, but it needs to go beyond that. It needs to go into what the person has done, what they are doing, and what they will do. So, let me tell you about Stacy Thompson. What I have done is I was a teacher for 11 years. Eight of those years were in Lowell. And I was able to not only just teach to the test, but I was also able to do things like get them engaged in civics, bringing them down to City Hall and getting them registered to vote, teaching them how to advocate for themselves. What I'm doing is, right now, I'm doing the same thing, is I'm continuing to make sure that voices are amplified in the city of Lowell. And I did so last year in making sure that racism as a public health crisis was a rally that I was able and honored to host. What I hope to do, and what I hope to do as your candidate for District One School Committee Member, which is again Pawtucketville and the Upper Highlands, is I hope to make sure that there's equity, there's excellence in education, and there's empowerment for our students. So, that is what I hope to do. I hope to gain your vote on November 2nd. And any questions you have, please go to stacyforloole.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, everybody. So, again, just to reiterate, we have two minutes per question per candidate, total of 15 minutes per question. And each candidate, you'll be able to respond a little bit, just one minute tops, if necessary. So, our first question goes to Jackie Doherty from George. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Jack Molin, this is for you. Are you vaccinated? And how would you rate the school department's response to it?
Well, thank you, George, for that question. I'm not sure where I'm looking. Yeah, okay. I am absolutely vaccinated because of my work. I'm a frontline worker with severely disabled children and their families, so I was vaccinated early. I think that we have done a good job in terms of trying to educate our families and our staff about what the challenges were around COVID and keeping people safe. I would have liked more support from the state when the vaccine first rolled out to be able to make our teachers and frontline workers at the front of the line, but that's all in hindsight. I think as we go forward, I'm looking for numbers and what percentage of our staff are vaccinated. I know from my work with families across the state that you have some schools, you know, private schools where they've got over 94% vaccination of staff. You have schools where they're holding clinics at the high school to make it easier for students to get vaccinated. These would be things I'd want to see moving forward, because I believe it is incumbent on us that we know by being vaccinated, by wearing masks in closed quarters, by handwashing and hygiene, these efforts are going to help us get control of this disease and be able to get it so that we can go back to normal. So, I think that it's important to be vaccinated, to practice whatever social distancing and masking and whatever measures we can to keep not only ourselves, but members in the community safe, especially when you're working with families where it could be a death sentence. Thank you.
And the question continues to each candidate, so Mike Dillon, thank you.
Thank you. I find that question to be very interesting in a school committee debate, and I don't know what it has to do with being a school committee member, but no, I am not vaccinated. I'm a firefighter and I've been working with the community straight through this whole pandemic. And I find it odd that vaccine status is something that we are even talking about right now. I think we've done, I don't think we've done a very good job with virus protocols during this whole pandemic. I think the fact that we still have masks on our kids is a sad state of affairs. And I think that, you know, had we, a year and a half ago, put a real focus on physical fitness and mental health and making sure that everybody is healthy and has a strong body and a strong mind, I mean, that's our way out of this pandemic. So, vaccine status, no, I've already had COVID and I've already recovered from COVID. So, I'm not going to let that control my life. That's all I got on that. Thank you very much.
Connie, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Yes, the short answer, yes, I am vaccinated. Was vaccinated as soon as it was possible for me to be vaccinated. I have seniors who I was taking care of and other members, both in work and in my personal life, that I felt it was important that it was one more level of protection that I could offer, not just to myself, but to the people who I work with and the people in my life. I do think, from the school's perspective, I think we are in a position where, with our mask mandate now, with the vaccine that's available for certainly all staff, but also for our older students, looking forward to when our younger students will have access to the vaccine as well. I think, you know, when we look at this as the public health crisis that it is, the critical word in that is public, and it's really something that impacts every single member of our community. And I think every layer of protection that we can bring to bear to keep ourselves, our families, our students, our seniors safe, is exactly the steps we should be taking. And I think from the information I've been able to have access to, both publicly and in terms of being a member of the school committee as well, I've recognized that it is the layering of protections that offers the most, the most kind of comprehensive approach that will keep our students safe, keep them in school, which I think is a very, very high priority, certainly for me and I know for many others, keep our staff safe, and overall, keep our community safe. Here in our city, we do not have high vaccination rates. We are still seeing significant cases, so this is not over yet. And again, as I look at each part of the attack of this, against this disease, I think vaccines are certainly a very, very important tool in the tool chest.
Well done, right at two minutes. Thank you so much. And Ben O'Parr, go ahead.
Well, yes, short answer is yes, I have been vaccinated. I got the one-shot dose. And with my understanding and study of a couple of years of microbiology and virology, I believe that vaccination is the way out of this pandemic. I came from a country that looked up to this country as the bastion of civilization that does things dependent upon advice from the experts. So, every expert indicates that vaccination So every expert indicates that vaccination is the way out of this, and I believe it. It is the resistance to vaccination that is causing this pandemic to not go away because we just cannot establish herd immunity. Without herd immunity, this thing will keep going back and forth, and now we are dealing with the Delta variety. Anytime from now, we could get another variety, and this will continue. This is not just with this COVID. This is the standard activity and action of viruses out there. If you don't treat them and shut them down quickly, they mutate. So I have been vaccinated. Regarding how this district has, our school district, together with our city, has handled this issue, I think they have handled it the best they can, knowing that this is nuanced to all of us. This is a new channel. This is a new learning, a new experience for all of us. So based on the circumstances at hand, I really, I really think I would give them an A for what they've done. Nobody else can, you know, will be a lion's pet otherwise. Thank you.
I'll ask that we allow everyone to complete their statements. So Jim Peters.
Hi, I'm Jim Peters. I have been vaccinated. I do want to say, though, that I have a brother who was a very good citywide baseball player, but he is known for the fact that he hasn't been vaccinated yet because he's not ready for it. So I can understand and feel what Mike's talking about. It's, I think vaccination is important. I think that, I feel better having been vaccinated than I would have if I had not, and that's just a, an opinion of mine. I think that we have to take care of our kids, and we have to make sure that somehow the kids get touched by something that's going to cure them later on in their years in school. And it's necessary to do what we can do to keep everybody safe and happy and healthy, and that's exactly what I'm striving for.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Stacy Thompson, same question.
Short answer, yes, I've been vaccinated. I was actually vaccinated as soon as possible because, and the reason being is because I did not want to be the person that hurt my mother. I want to make sure that she was healthy and safe, and I felt like that was the best decision for me to do so. You know, the reality of it is vaccines, for some people, are scary. Medicine is scary, but when you listen to the scientists that break it down, they do so because they want to make sure that a city like Lowell is able to keep their kids in school. And I know for so many parents, they suffered last year trying to pivot, trying to understand how to do what they were to, you know, get their kids educated. And you have teachers, and I want to thank the teachers and the staff who were able to pivot in such a traumatic year. Was it done perfectly? Absolutely not. You know, again, hindsight, 2020, there's so much that people learned as things were happening. But again, I think that it's important to make sure that, you know, that the students are protected and that they can be in school because, you know, they lost so much by not being able to be with one another. So for, to have a vaccination, you have the opportunity to, again, keep the kids in school. Yes, they're masked, and I will be the first one to tell you, I'm tired of the masks, but it's another, another thread of protection to, you know, stop the virus from spreading in the way that it has. So please, if you haven't, consider it, and I'm a vaccine supporter. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Can I take my minute of rebuttal here?
Yes, I'll open for one minute, and we are going to keep very close eye on the time, so I will be cutting people off if necessary. Thank you.
Well, I have to really say that I understand where Mike is coming from and there are many people like that. It is important for us to recognize where they are coming from and not just, you know, either brought to my side, but we have to recognize where they are coming from and there are many people like that. Where I think we should have, we have work to do is to find ways of letting people know and educating people, having some talk so people really will understand. So people have gray areas, especially with this new vaccine, the way it came out and so on. So people have concerns, but it is good to, you know, be compassionate to those, to people that are doubting the efficacy of this and really understand the science. It's our work to do to really explain things to that segment of the population.
Thank you, Ben. Mike, would you still like to respond?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Well, now that we've divided the room into vaxxed and unvaxxed, I just have a question for anybody in here that would like to answer it. Does anybody know if natural immunity is as good or not as good as a vaccine? Can anybody tell me? I'd love a, I'd love a follow-up answer by anybody on that. And where I'm coming from is since March 2020, I did CPR on a COVID victim in March 2020. Then I was a little scared. As this thing has gone on, I just heard somebody mention fear of vaccines. I am not afraid of this virus. The fear out there and in this room, apparently, is of the virus. So I've been at work while everybody else was at home, working remotely, without a vaccine for this whole time. And I don't need to get the vaccine, and now I'm the isolated one in the room.
Thank you. Is there any further responses? Go ahead, Stacy Thompson.
What I will say is that, you know, healthcare is an important thing, and obviously, it's a personal decision. But when I look at the statistics, and I will tell you, for me, before I actually did get the vaccine, I actually spoke to a friend of mine who's a virologist and an epidemiologist because I want to know more information. So I did seek out information because I think that's important. I don't think we should blindly do anything. And when I did that, I felt more at peace with the decision that I made. As far as, you know, it being our natural immunity, again, that's not what the science says. And for so many things, you know, that's not my expertise, so I'm going to trust the experts on that, and that's what I'll lean to. And I think that that's a good way to, for us to, you know, be able to express that to our children and to the community at large.
Thank you, Stacy. I see candidate Peters.
I just wanted to answer Mike's question. The ABC News, World News, with David Muir, stated that the, not the vaccine, but the COVID cell lasts for three months.
Genetic code.
The genetic code of the cell lasts for three months, so it's a three-month time that you have to be safe. Whether or not it's, that's just the only thing, I have no idea.
All right. Thank you. Anyone who hasn't responded, otherwise, we'll go on to the next question. Okay, thanks so much. So that question was from the planning panel. The next question is from the public, and Vladimir will pose it to Mike Dillon.
Absolutely. So on the theme of health, overall health, do you think racism is a public health crisis?
This is the first two questions that we're starting with. No, I don't believe that racism is a public health crisis. I don't, I don't know really where the statement started, that racism is a public health crisis, but it just seems, it just seems, I don't know, odd to me that we are in a pandemic, and we're also still dealing with this opioid crisis that kills people every single day. And according to the changing definitions over the years of racism, I think that maybe has to do with why this notion that racism is a public health crisis. Because, you know, everything is racism now. You know, we're talking about systems that are made from racist beginnings. You know, racism is really a thought in somebody's head that they, the color of their skin makes them superior to people with different colored skin. You know, and I don't think there's much going around in Lowell as people make it out to be. The reason why I stayed in the city is because it's a tough town, and there are all kinds of people here, people of every walk of life. And that's the type of place that I want to live in, and that's the type of place that I want to raise my kids in because I think it's beneficial in, you know, millions of ways. But no, I disagree that racism is a public health crisis. So thank you.
Okay. Connie Martin.
Thank you very much. I do believe the statement that racism is a public health crisis. I believe it strongly enough that both myself and my colleague Ms. Doherty made the motion on the school committee floor to declare it a public health crisis in our schools. And it was a motion that did pass on the school committee side while it did not pass on the city council side. I think that any conversation around racism really is a conversation about power. And ultimately, particularly when we're talking about healthcare systems, there is a power element that is part of it, and it does put people, people of color, it does put minorities, it puts whole groups of people at a disadvantage in trying to access those most basic needs of getting appropriate healthcare coverage for themselves and their families. I think the motion, as we stated it, that several months ago, quite a while ago, I guess now, on the school committee floor, really talked about not only the health aspect of it, but the educational aspect of it, which is obviously, I think, pretty appropriate for a school committee. And I think the recognition that there are systemic problems in our district that are no different from every other district in this country that are grappling with the same issues. And I think the difference we can make here in Lowell is being able to look at these issues clear-eyed and really do the important work that comes from recognizing that there's a problem, because every time we brush a problem under the carpet, it will always come back 10 times worse. It takes real courage, I think, to be able to look at it as a problem and to be able to recognize whatever role we may play in it and be able to work together to find real solutions for our students and our families here in the city.
Thank you, Connie. Ben Opara.
Yes. Racism is, I agree, is a public health crisis. I can do this from different angles. First of all, I have to commend the current school committee for their vote on that, that they really acknowledged and looked at that case holistically to recognize that racism indeed is a public health crisis. The night of the vote on the city council, I will tell you this, and I watch all those meetings diligently, was perhaps the saddest evening of my life in a long time, when they voted that motion down. I lost friends. I was troubled by it. I had conversations with some of them, and we came to agree that indeed we had the right to disagree on that. So yes, racism is a public health crisis, but you have to look at it from the viewpoint of the people that are complaining about this to be able to understand it. Because if you don't feel it, you wouldn't understand it. So what we urge people to do is don't be defensive, but rather, listen. Listen, have two ears, but keep one mouth. In other words, you listen more or you talk less. It is an experience. It is a form of epiphany of sorts. When some of us challenged and took Black Lives Matter as a mantra in the city, when nobody wanted to touch it, but we did because we urge people to listen more instead of...
Thank you, Ben. We'll move on to Jim Peters. Thank you.
Yes, I have, I have a great many feelings about racism. I grew up in Chicago, and I didn't grow up in a, I grew up in a very mixed town, 50/50. And it was eye-opening. And I had a tenant-in-law, I had a two-family, I had a tenant-in-law that came to me and asked me if she could rent my two-family, and I said yes, and she was black. And that night, a man crossed the street while I was standing there, watching her, crossed the street with a fire can and said that he was going to use it on my house. And the next night, the man came in with a brick and threw it through the window. We're not above racism in Lowell. Racism in Lowell is a problem. And I stand very clearly on it and want people to understand that racism in Lowell can be a problem, and we have to deal with it. And we can't stand around and say, well, this person's this color and this person's that color, and that makes it all the better. It's got to be worked out as a group, and we need to do things as a group, and I would just like to see it go away.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Stacy Thompson, same question.
I indeed do believe that racism is a public health crisis because I live it. I speak from lived experience. You know, I was fortunate enough to host the rally last year as racism is a public health crisis, and I have to thank so many organizations. We had 1,500 organizations and people that signed on to the letter of racism is a public health crisis. And the thing that was interesting is that we spoke to the scientists, and the scientists explained the very way in which it affects people of color, people that look like me. So it's hard to hear when someone would quantify opioid addiction as a crisis or homelessness as a crisis, which I have lived through, okay? But they don't quantify my lived experience when I walk down Merrimack Street and someone screams at me the N-word, and then I have to go to work and be friendly and chipper, and I have that weight on me and that knot in my stomach all day long. It's a public health crisis, and the reality of it is, if you want to know about it, it's not saying you're a racist. It's saying, learn from my lived experience. Ask me, we will talk about it. I have no problem talking to you about it because people that look like me are experts in that field. Thank you.
Can I borrow one, one minute here of rebuttal?
That's right. Jacqueline Doherty.
Thank you. Yes, as Ms. Martin mentioned, it was a year ago in August 2020 that we had the joint motion that was passed by the majority of the school committee that racism is a national health crisis. I followed that up with a motion in July of this year, July 21, which also passed by a majority, asking for a report from the school department on efforts to provide more inclusive curriculum. Because as the schools, we are looking at, obviously, the education piece, and I think it is an important piece as we work as a community to really overturn what had been discriminatory practices for centuries in this country. And a lot of us, you know, when we went to school, we learned about the civil rights movement, and you think, oh, that's all in the past, you know, that this discrimination. But as I'm learning more and more, I understand and I can respect my colleagues who spoke earlier, candidates, about listening with both ears. When the city had that listening session, it was eye-opening for me. When I saw the Black Lives Matter movement come out, it was eye-opening for me because I think if you're a white-skinned person, you don't experience racism, not that kind of overt racism. So you have to be looking outside your own circle of experience to be open to understanding that, to me, the national health crisis is not necessarily that hateful, overt, racist person who yells a comment or treats someone disrespectfully. It's the people like myself who feel, we're not racist. We're trying to live together in peace and make progress, but are not willing to acknowledge that there are systematic problems and issues that are keeping one group down while advantaging another group. We need to open our eyes to that, and I'm going to use the housing example for help because if you have higher rates of asthma...
I think I'll have to cut you off now, but thank you, Jacqueline. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I will, I will say in furtherance that I will take myself, some example. I came to this country and subsequently enrolled in graduate school at my favorite school right down the road here, and I experienced it firsthand. And I know that I'm not... right down the road here. And I experienced it firsthand. And I know that I'm not a weak student. And people that have started class with me can attest to that. But in that particular course, I came this close to flunking it. And it affected my psyche almost permanently. So, and then I was 28 years old. I was able to handle it. So, my worry is about my children in their formative years. How are they able to handle this? And this is the story that we people of color tell when we have this quote-unquote discussion with our children. This is what we want people to just pay attention to and listen some more.
Thank you so much. So, I see Mike Dillon is requesting one minute. And then Jaclyn Doherty, if there's anyone else, let me know.
Thank you. You know, I guess one question that I have is what has come from recognizing racism as a public health crisis? I don't think that anything has come from that vote. I think that it is, was strictly a political show. And I think that's what a lot of this kind of talk has turned into. And we're talking about, this is just a difference in language, public health crisis. You know, you can't say that racism does not exist. I mean, that's not what anybody is saying that says, you know, racism is not a public health crisis. But rather than just sit here and only get one minute to speak, I would, you know, invite anybody to have a long conversation on camera with me anytime leading up, you know, maybe to the election. Because nobody really wants to touch this issue, and I will talk on it. I will speak to anybody on it. And I would welcome a long-form discussion because the only thing that I think is right going on right now is that...
Thank you, Mike. And Jackie will have the next follow-up. Go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you. So, in response to that question, I think that all these efforts to kind of take a hard eye look at what have been housing, criminal justice, education, what have been the systematic, systemic problems that have continued to keep one group from having the same opportunities as another group. I think that is the only way forward. It's the only way is to understand, you know, I had these benefits that you didn't have. And without realizing that, we can't move forward. And I want to just give one example that for me was an epiphany. When all that Black Lives Matter stuff was coming out, and I was reading reports about how mothers of color would say to their sons, if you get pulled over by the police, keep your hands on the wheel. Like, I don't know if you've seen any of this, right? And I'm thinking about how I spoke to my children about if you ever get pulled over for a traffic violation.
Thank you, Jackie.
Never worried about their lives.
We're going to move on. Thank you.
Worried about getting a ticket.
All right. I have seen Stacy Thompson request a follow-up.
Shortly put, inequities are real, and they exist in many of the ways that Jackie Doherty just spoke about. You know, if you haven't experienced it, I get why you may question it. I get why it may not seem like, you know, a thing to you. But it is a real thing. Because people are sick. They experience things differently. Your body, and again, I'm not a scientist, so I would implore you to reach out to places like the GLHA. They have statistics, you know, that are really clear and concise that can really give you that. But I would also say to Mr. Dillon that I do welcome that opportunity to speak to you on camera about it. Because I think this is important for people to potentially hear. And I'm hoping that people will be able to understand where, why that's really a thing and where it comes from. Because it's not a political gimmick. It's life, and it's my life.
We can do it on Peters Principles anytime you guys want.
One second, Jim Peters. Sorry to cut you off, but if you're requesting a minute, let me know.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, if they want to have a show...
I'm sure we'll be able to set that up. Absolutely.
It's called Peters Principles, and it shoots in here.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. I see Connie Martin is requesting a follow-up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think just, you know, again, as we have these conversations, it's important to note that when you're looking at the social determinants of health and the overwhelming documentation of how, where somebody lives, what kind of job they have access to, what their access to transportation is, all these things have an impact on people's health. And all of these things are impacted by racism in one way or another. I think the key thing, and again, I think for many of us, we've gone through kind of a period of what I hope is self-discovery. I think trying to learn more about the world we're part of and what role we can play in it, both positive, hopefully moving forward, and recognizing whatever negative aspects we may have had. You know, the key for me was recognizing that this is not a personal affront, that my taking the time to understand what white privilege is and what role it plays in the world I'm part of, for me, was really very, was a really important process. And I think it really helped inform my understanding of this issue in a much more thoughtful and considerate way.
We're going to move to the next question now.
Thank you. Sorry. I always go over.
Next question, we start with Ms. Connie Martin. There's a notable amount of data indicating significant disparities in student achievements for Hispanic and Latino students. How would you address this to make it more equitable?
First off, I wish I had the short point-of-the-sword answer. I really do. And I wish there really was one that could give us a quick answer to solve this problem. The statistics are absolutely there. You see them in Lowell. You see them across the country. So, you know, seeing these kind of achievement gaps absolutely have to be one of the most important things that we need to pay attention to. Again, I don't pretend I have the answer, but I do think that some of the efforts that are underway currently in trying to bring more culturally appropriate materials into our school, introducing our curriculum and ensuring that it has a representation of kind of cross-cultural materials, I think recognizing and respecting the different languages, the different cultural experiences that our students come from, that needs to be part of what we celebrate and what we focus on in our schools. I also think that there are, again, systemic problems within educational systems where you can look at the number of suspensions, other things like that, where discipline does not appear to be meted out equally across school populations. That's something that I know is being addressed, but needs continued focus. And I think that more than anything, it's being able to ensure that in our schools, we're willing and we're capable of having thought-provoking conversations across all different areas of concern that are respectful and that we're able to kind of teach our students not just to parrot back information, but to be able to learn and critically analyze information so that every challenge that comes in front of them, they're able to address.
Thank you, Connie. Ben?
Well, yes, the statistics are there. I agree. But then, we know by experts and people in education across board that children at very young age pick up things that they can identify with, something or someone that looks like them. So, what are we going to do about correcting, you know, bridging that gap? Perhaps look at what is being done now good in training for teachers and parents and staff, be able to align these children to something that they are familiar with. There are so many ways that we can deal with these things. I don't claim to be an expert. I will see things and make my judgment based on the statistics at hand. Or that the disparity is there? Yes, we understand that. And it is part of that also. And I see a normal trend right now with, you know, school boards and, you know, superintendents across board. And that is why I think we are in good hands here. We're on the right trajectory. We can still do better. I will look into how we can do better. But at least, because one of the first protocols that the college superintendent did was to hire equity and diversity, you know, ahead, at least to show that we can begin to do something in that regard. These are ways that we can look out and look outward to see how we can influence these children who are, at earliest, in their life, to be able to learn things and pick things up from people or areas that they are familiar with.
Thank you, Ben. Candidate Jim Peters.
Hi. If I have a fault, it's that I speak too quickly and it gets a little mixed up. But the fact is that I think that we should, as a nation, start to think about having two languages being used in the United States. And one would be Spanish and one would be English. And I think that people are scared of the idea of a Spanish-speaking group, but we're not a Spanish-speaking group. It would just be people learning a little bit about Spanish. I was a teacher for 15 years. I was a principal for two years, and I was a teacher again in another school for three years. And so, I had 20 years' experience. And one day, I was standing outside of my room, listening to these kids talking, and they were talking in Spanish. And I turned around and said, what are you, what are you going to do? And one of them said, you can speak Spanish, and they all disappeared. And I, I'm not great at Spanish, but I can understand it. And I think we need to have people who go to both areas. And we need to teach English. We need to teach Spanish. And I don't think Never mind. It's okay.
Thank you, Jim.
See, I can't remember what the 61 is.
Maybe it'll come back, circle back.
It might be language. Yeah, the language probably is, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Stacy Thompson, same question. And this question does come from the community.
Well, thank you for this question. The Latinx community, as I've reached out to them and have reached out to me, has definitely expressed this as an issue. And so, I'm really, I'm really glad to be able to speak about it today. And I do have some really concrete ideas. What I will say is, it's not going to be, you know, something that happens right away. It's because it's systemic and it has been existent for so long, there are lots of steps that need to take place. But a few ideas. There needs to be more staffing. You know, the reality of it is, there needs to be more staffing so that language access is more fluid. I also have an idea for a pilot program, which is a curriculum development program. And in that, I would like to include social workers, a curriculum development expert, parents, teachers, students. Because I feel like that richness will allow for them to see their education, look and feel different. They'll feel more invested, so they'll be more successful. In addition to that, I feel like there needs to be evaluation of the system as it exists. What are the teachers doing? What's been successful? What's failed? And we need to have that accountability, and that's okay. We need to just check it. And if it's not working, we need to fix it. There needs to be a true training, not a surface-level training, but an ongoing training so that the Latinx community feels heard and seen and validated in their school system. Advocacy, I think it's important to make sure that the parents, as well as the students, know how to advocate for themselves so that they feel like, you know, the situations, the issues that are important to them are heard and are in there. And then there needs to be a diversity in hiring, and not just on a racial level, but on a culturally sensitive level. There has to be a social, emotional learning component to what goes on. And that's going to be what makes, you know, that successful. As you know, they're looking to pass a culturally and linguistically sustainability practices program, the CLSP. And that's going to be something that teachers are looking for because it gives them support to be able to deliver the services that they really need to so that our Latinx community feels more supported. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have all the candidates finish. I know, I know. Thank you, guys, before anyone, as someone's requested a minute. So, go ahead, Jaclyn Doherty.
Thank you. And I guess a lot has been covered that I would add to. I think the first thing to think about when you look at the achievement gaps that we've seen, and it's not just in Lowell, it is across the country, that much of it is a socioeconomic issue as well. And I think that whatever we do in school without wraparound services, it's going to be limited progress. But that doesn't mean there aren't things that we can and should and are currently trying to do. So, I'm just going to go through the numbers as I put them. And I think that some of it was mentioned by some of the earlier speakers as well. I think, first of all, the diversity in staffing is a part of it because when children have role models that they can look to, teachers that look like them, that have similar backgrounds and understanding, not only do they engage with that teacher better, but they also have a sense of, I could be that. That could be a future for me. So, I think the diversity in staffing is very important, and we are making strides in that area. It was also mentioned about professional development for staff and leaders. I think that should be an ongoing and really enriching program where people are listening and learning from each other, not only about issues about how to connect with students from different backgrounds, but also issues around behavior. And setting up programs in school so that all the adults are on the same page about helping our children to behave appropriately within school. Because I think that's an ongoing issue, that you end up having people, you know, being suspended or separated from the classes. And it's not working. It's not a system that's teaching them how to behave better so that we can learn together better. And I think that really leads to the whole engaging students piece. If we have curriculum that they can access, that they're interested in, and that there are opportunities, whether it's art, music, athletics, other things about school that can tap into their interests and get them excited. And lastly, although I don't consider this last at all on the list, but inviting and welcoming parents and really continually reaching out to them because they are key players in our ability to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Mike Dillon. And if anyone at any time wants us to repeat a question, we can certainly do that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's interesting we talk about achievement gaps because during this whole pandemic, we've done nothing but widen those gaps for our most vulnerable kids. We kept them out of the building for an amount of time that was beyond anything that a kid should ever have to endure. And to put a kid in a remote learning situation in their own home, when their own home is a terrifying place to most people, that is a sad state of affairs. And we allowed our kids, no matter what color their skin is, kids that don't have it as good as us, we allowed them to sit at home and not be provided the services that our kids can provide. I also think that, you know, this achievement gap by racial groups is a multi-variable issue. We can't just say racism. And we can't, also can't rule out that our teachers are damn good at what they do. And they do get across to kids that look different than them. And kids that look different than them can learn from them. I think they do an excellent job at it. So, I don't know that those, I'm more interested in telling our kids that nothing's going to hold them back in life and providing them with competence. Because that is how kids become confident. I think every single kid should be a confident and competent human being coming out of our school system. Thank you.
So, that is all of the candidates' initial responses. Any, okay. Seems like we can go to the next question. Thank you so much. Vladimir?
Perfect. So, the next question is for Mr. Opara. And this question is, do you prefer Boston over neighborhood schools? Or do you have a preferred model for the city?
Well, the first question is, how did we get to Boston? Is by consent decree, if I recollect. It's been work in progress. Yes, we have made a lot of achievement in that. But we cannot rest on our laurels. So, I am on the outside looking in. The jury is still out on that to really understand the dynamics and the pros and cons of Boston alongside, you know, neighborhood schools. I know this is an abundant issue with most of people that I have spoken to during my, you know, Doherty Door. But my answer to that is, the jury is still out on this. I don't have an opinion because I really need to look at the totality of the issue. A lot has been achieved through Boston against, you know, neighborhood schools. And my dream and expectation and hope is that we continue to achieve those and do better. It doesn't help for us to retrograde... It doesn't help for us to retrograde. So it is something that I just have difficulties throwing in an opinion because I think that it is work in progress. I am on the outside looking in when I buy your, you know, support and, you know, hope that you vote for me if I get in as a school committee member, will be able to know more things and see things firsthand, be able to make the right judgment.
Thank you, Ben. Next candidate, Jim Peters.
I believe that... I sat through the busing argument back in the early 1980s or the late 1970s when my brother-in-law was the U.S. Senator in the Capitol. And he was for busing. And I am for neighborhood schools. So it's important that we have a busing option to make sure that all the kids get to school. But it's also important that we try to get some kids to go to neighborhood schools and feel free to feel good about being in school and being in the school that's down the neighborhood. I picked out my house because it was a block from the Maury School. It was a block from St. Mary's Church. And it reminded me of a town that I grew up in, Corvillo, in Cosgrove, Iowa, that had 27 people in it. And not many people have a town that they could talk about that's got 27 people in it. But it's just... Busing is important. I agree with Paul on part of it, but I disagree with him on some of it, too. So that was my stance.
Thank you. Stacy Thompson.
I think this is absolutely one of these dividing questions. And I've, as I've been canvassing, as I've been door-knocking and meeting with people, it's been something that we've talked about. For me, it boils down to equity. And I feel like if the schools across the board, across the city, had that sameness, you know, if the experience was the same, it may not be or have had this been, had been an issue from the beginning. And so I think that that's really more so the issue. I went to a neighborhood school. I didn't grow up in Lowell. But I went to a neighborhood school, so I understand that experience. But the benefit of schools of Lowell is there's such diversity among the schools. And based on where you are in certain neighborhoods, you're not going to really feel that diversity in the same way. So that could be the benefit of indeed having the busing experience. I get it. I get, you know, if you're living in a certain area expecting your kids to, like, go to school with their next-door neighbor and play together and all those things. So I understand that, but I do think there is potentially a benefit from busing as well. Thank you.
We'll go to Jacqueline Doherty.
Thank you. I think the busing versus neighborhood schools always seems like it's so simple, like, just pick one or the other, but it's actually very complex. And in Lowell, we have a consent decree which says we are going to have diversity. We're going to have a balance of different types of people, people of color, people of distant socioeconomic backgrounds at each of our schools. We also bus the charter school students. We bus the parochial school students. And we have citywide schools, meaning that you can go to a school that's on one end of the city when you live on the other. So when we look at, and we try to balance that by having neighborhood schools, like, if your school you can see from your street and that's your first choice, that's going to give you a more weighted chance of getting into your neighborhood school. But it's all this complicated equation of looking at all these other weights and balances. So I think we need, and we have been trying for a few years to really tackle this issue because if we're going to have a citywide school in one zone of the city, then we should in the other zone because that issue of equity also comes into play. You shouldn't be denied options because of the neighborhood you live in. You should be able to have all the options equally in the different neighborhoods. So given all that, it's a very complicated issue. It's something we need to keep working on. For me, the idea of having balance and having diversity in each of our schools is an important priority. So that would be something that I would want to keep, no matter how other ways we come to configure the issue of busing and neighborhood schools. But I think that when we look at it, it seems like it's simple on the surface, but it really is much more complicated if you value having equity and diversity in all our schools. And I think that there are even neighborhoods that don't have enough kids in that neighborhood. They'd have to bus them to fill the schools. Thank you.
Mike Dillon.
Thank you, yeah. And this is something that I have been talking about since I got elected last time and I've been pushing for, is a move back to schools closer to home, creating walkable opportunities for our kids. Really building our communities back up is a huge part of it for me. I've, just over this term, I've talked to plenty of people who live on a street where every kid on the street goes to a different school in the city. And, you know, we complain about our kids not being outside playing. Well, they don't know the kids in their own neighborhood. Their friends are all over the city. And, you know, that makes it difficult for a community to be strong. Kids on the same street playing together, parents knowing each other, parents having easy access to the school themselves, particularly parents who aren't well-off. You know, they have, they will have closer access or could have closer access. You know, we have a fair student funding process where we put extra money to our schools that are called our Renaissance schools, that are struggling schools, in order, and we give them extra resources and staff in order to bring them up. So we're on a path to make sure that all of our schools are providing a valuable education around the city. And also, we just changed to a district representation model. So we're electing politicians onto the school committee from our own district that your kid doesn't even necessarily go to a school in that district. So I think there are lots of benefits. And never mind the money, you know, and the transportation mess. We're in a mess with transportation right now. And, you know, if we were in a situation where kids went or had more walkable routes to their school, then a lot of these problems could be mitigated. And I think in the future that that is a way that we should go. Thank you.
Thank you. And Connie Martin.
Thank you very much. As we look at the issue of busing versus neighborhood schools, it is kind of a simple way of defining what is really a much more complicated and complex problem. As I look at it, at its very core, it comes down to, does Lowell want to have a segregated school system or a desegregated school system? And in my mind, the value that comes from having our students from different backgrounds, different, again, socioeconomic situations from the whole kind of breadth of variety that we celebrate in this city and that we recognize is such a critical strength for us, that happens, that begins in our classrooms. The ability of our students to have friends from across the city, I think that's a good thing. I think that, you know, true equity comes from having that same opportunity in all of our schools across the district, but ensuring that there is a healthy mix of students that are all taking part in that educational process. There are certainly expenses to transportation that I think we should always be working to pare down. But ultimately, when you're looking at the percentages of different student populations in our schools, ensuring that that is balanced across the board, to me, is one of the most critically important things we do to ensure that all of our students have a fair and equitable education.
Thank you so much. That wraps up the candidate responses to this question. This will be our last question, and it also comes from the community. I want to thank all the incumbents and candidates and, again, the team and everyone here today and everyone watching at home. So this is our last question.
Thank you. I'll start this question to Mr. Jim Peters. How should the city interact with charter schools?
I went before the union last time and was asked that question. And I think that charter schools are expensive and not necessarily in the flavor of what we expect them to be. To some people, they're wonderfully flavor- virgin. To people like me, it's a waste of money. So my feeling is that charter schools are a waste of money and that we have to put the kids back in normal situations. And I know that's kind of conservative, but that's what I believe. And it's not going to change with any time soon. I think that charter schools do have a certain flavor. And I like their, some of the things that they do, but I don't agree with the process, the idea of having a charter school. So that's my answer.
Thank you, Jim Peters. Stacy Thompson.
I think that what the city should be doing is focusing on our public schools. I think that our public schools could be all the more rich when there is full attention being paid to them, when you start to diversify, you know, the pots of money and where we're already trying to really stay focused and strategic about how we want to spend the monies that are for the public schools. I think that it's really important that we really invest in them. And there are so many ideas and so many things that could come to fruition without the divestiture of that money. And so I, for me, I think to have equity in the public school system, then that needs to be where the focus is. Again, parents have the full, you know, full access to do what they think is best for their family. But I would ask for them to choose public schools because you're going to get a quality education. We need to focus on them, and I wish the city would do just that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Doherty.
Thank you. So I look at the charter school question really from the lens of a parent. And so they are public schools. My concern with the charter schools is that they're taking funds away from the mainstream schools. But the idea of giving a parent a choice of saying, "If you're not happy with what the Lowell public schools are providing, you have this other option," I would support that. I think they need to be held to the same standards that the traditional public schools are held to, the accountability measures that I hold myself and my administration to. Those things all go with it. But in terms of how I look at the charter schools, if it wasn't for the feeling that they're draining our resources, I think that it's an option for parents that I don't have a problem with. And especially if they all, and I think this was really the intention when charter schools started, that they would be incubators for trying new ways of teaching and new ways of reaching students that would have better results. And if they're doing that, then I want to learn from that and use those best cases to bring back to the traditional structure of what we are doing. But to give parents an option, and the difference between a charter school and, let's say, a parochial or private school option, is the check. A parent doesn't have to write a check to choose a charter school. So from that perspective, I don't have a problem with them. I just want them to be held accountable to the same standards that we are. And I don't want them to be draining our resources because we take all students, not just the parents who choose us. So that means we need the resources to meet all the needs of those students. So that would be my take on charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mike Dillon, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm actually going to take a second to go back to the neighborhood schools question briefly. Latifah Phillips, who was our chief equity officer, we already have these numbers for the neighborhoods in our city. She went through and took all our students and put them into the school closest to their home. She reported back to us there was negligible difference in the diversity around the city in our schools. Our neighborhoods are diversified. If you ask any firefighter in this city, in every build, in every part of the city, every firehouse that you work at, you see every single type of person. So that's just another thing that, going back to the neighborhood schools. As far as charter schools go, I can't help, being a former teacher myself, but think that charter schools are taking away from the education of the public schools. And I hear great things from parents who send their kids to a charter school, and they're glad for the opportunity. But it's stretching our public school systems then. And they don't have to adhere to all the same policies as the public schools. And I think that money could be well-used. They don't face all the same challenges. And I think that the public school system could gain a lot of ground if they had that money. Thank you.
Connie Martin.
Thank you. I do think that the charter schools represent a challenge in terms of how you fairly distribute funding, educational dollars here in the city and beyond. I think that, you know, again, when you look at the parity of populations, they are quite different, most particularly around special education needs, which is something that has come up across the Commonwealth with the charter schools simply not being equipped to provide those services in a lot of cases. And the public school having no choice but to be equipped. So that there is, you know, there is a greater strain on a public school system when you're talking about special education needs, not just in our classrooms, but when you're talking about students who are being placed out of district because they have profound needs. Those are, you know, in the public school realm, we really have to, we have to work with every child that comes through the door. And that's an important part of what public schools truly are all about, is ensuring that every child gets access to the least restrictive environment that will support their learning. I think the other aspect with charter schools, you know, and I think they grew out of kind of a movement that we kind of used to have here in the city. I mean, we had incubator schools. We had magnet schools where you were really trying out new methods, new, you know, new professional development techniques, new curriculum. And that was something that really kind of had put Lowell on the map, particularly with the Graduate School of Education at the university, where you were able to, you know, try out in real-time new methods of pedagogy and, again, instructional methods. I think charter schools were presented as an opportunity for that to happen on a grander scale. But what I find, you know, over the course of these, you know, 20 or so years since charters have been in place, we haven't seen those innovations making their way back into the public school setting. And I think that was really what, certainly I can remember having these conversations of wanting to see the charter schools be those kind of incubators where great ideas could come out of, but that then we could all benefit from. And I haven't seen that come to fruition.
Thank you.
Regarding charter schools, I look at it two-pronged. First, as a parent, I might view it favorably because it gives me, a parent and every parent out there, the choice to choose. But as a school committee member and looking whose responsibility it is to provide equitable and good education to our students in our district, especially in my district of Ottercatville and the Highlands, if you saw, you know, let me represent you, is it is sucking away funds from the public school system. Also, they have the ability and the luck to pick and choose who to educate that our schools don't have. So it's, in a sense, it is like a leech. And I'm sorry to use that word, but it is taking funds away from the public school system. If there are ways that they can, that they can be funded outside of the pool from which the public school system also pools, yes, I agree. But generally, as someone whose responsibility it is to look out for our kids and look out for the welfare and good funding of the public school system. Because, yes, the charter school is a public school. Most people don't know that. But they are on a pedestal of their own. And how they came, through my research, I know the whole process came off from, you know, agreeing with Connie and Jacqueline what I said, from, you know, having, being the incubator environment. But that hasn't materialized. So in a sense, they're actually sucking away funds from the public school system. And for that, I have reservation towards, you know, charter schools.
So we have a little time. If there's a response, I see Mike Dillon is requesting one minute.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to take the last minute to, you know, the... Yeah, thank you. I just want to take the last minute to, you know, the word diversity get thrown around here a lot tonight, and I think diversity of thought is the thing that we really need to be thinking more about. Most of the questions that we heard here tonight were not about our public schools, but racial issues in the city. We need more diversity of thought in our, in the whole election process, to be honest with you. So, you know, I'd like, like to let the public know. Take, take the time to go on YouTube and go on my YouTube channel, and you can hear me speaking fully, without time constraints, in that avenue, anytime you would like. It's Mike Dillon Jr. for L, Mike Dillon Jr. for LSC on YouTube. You can find all my, all my opinions there, without any of the constraints of this setup. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our question period. And I want to thank all of you so much, incumbents and candidates alike, for your dedication to this community, and both in the pandemic and campaigning during a pandemic. Thank you all for your time for being here, and everyone for listening. Thank you to the questioners, George Frokoop and Vladimir Saldaña, and to the LTC team, to co-sponsors. And I'll just add, from Lowell Votes, to remember to check your registration status if you need to do that. You can do that online and register online. Early voting starts October 20th till the 29th, and we can have mail-in voting as an option this year as well, and of course, on November 2nd. If you need to look up your district, you can go to yourloleyourvote.org. I'm sorry, I want to make sure. Yep, yourloleyourvote, and look up lolma.gov/findmydistrict. So thank you all again so much, and we'll see you at the next one. Good night.